Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Province Town 365's informational forum on town meeting warrants. I always forget that name, so I'm sorry if I said it wrong. I'm Brian Armstrong, and I'm a member of Province Town 365. Tonight, Michelle Cronin will be our facilitator this evening after I make a small introduction. So tonight's forum is to have presenters from the town go over the town warrants, kind of give an explanation of it. We will then ask, Michelle will then ask, after the warrant is read, for a vote of understanding. So if you understand what the warrant is, we'll ask you to raise your hand. If there is a majority that understands what the warrant entails, whether a yes or no vote will mean, we will have a small discussion on that warrant because there are some warrants that will have a lot of discussion tonight. So we're going to try to move through some of these quickly so that the ones that have a lot of questions can be answered. There will be a two-minute time limit on questions. You have two minutes to ask your questions. And presenters will have five. Some of the presenters will go over the five minutes because some of them are a little complicated. But our goal is to try to move this along, especially since we have started fifteen minutes in tonight. So I will turn this over to Michelle. She will lead tonight and introduce each of the presenters for the warrant.
So a little bit of my facilitation background. A lot of women's music festivals where an issue would come up every three seconds. And then also a facilitation company. And then fifteen missions to Bosnia after the war doing facilitation amongst the people. So that qualifies me for tonight, I think. And I brought a little crystal. You know, if you get stuck, you take this, you hold it up to your heart chakra, or your third eye, we're set. All right? Okay. Now, this is a major challenge tonight because it really is about giving people who care, and the fact that you came out indicates you do care. And it's about giving accurate information. So next week, when the town meeting happens, it's going to be that much easier, much clearer. And our challenge is discussion, debate. We want to do away with debate tonight. We just want to do that best, just the facts. And if it's not clear to you, you can ask with clarifying questions. But this is not a time for a major opinion fest. It's just, let's get as much information that we can get in order to help it next week. All right? Yes? Is that clear? Yes. Okay, cool. Our first presenter is David P. Is that okay, better call you David P?
Yes, pardon my language. What are we looking at first? The consent agenda one? I think. So we have a consent agenda. It's the first five articles. The first one is the famous Greenhead Fly Control District. This is actually, in a sense, a revote. There was an era when it was voted last spring, so it needs to be re-voted at this meeting. And so it's already a vote already taken, and I'm already known. And so this one should be, again, not controversial because it's already been approved, and it's just as a correction of an era in the last vote. The next four articles, Articles Two, Three, Four, and Five, this is more like a quiz for me up here, if I get any of it right. And the better judgments are David and Gloria, if Gloria wants to jump in at any point. Okay? Nope, she's going to see whether or not I get it right.
Yeah, come on up, Gloria.
But these are really corrections and scripters errors in getting her the right. These are not actual changes. Article Two is essentially a correction to the table of permitted uses because the table of permitted uses was never updated to reflect changes that were made actually in town meeting in 2013. And do you want to do any further detail on that?
Here, I mean, there might be questions. There, I don't know if you remember, but when we passed site plan review regulations, the planning board was the permitting authority for four or more dwelling units. And we actually had a conflict in our zoning bylaw because footnote eight referred to the Board of Appeals as that permitting authority. So to eliminate all confusion and inconsistencies, we added a new line to the use table for four or more dwelling units per lot, put the symbol PB in that line so that everyone knows that it's the planning board that's the permitting authority, and struck footnote eight, which gave that authority to the Board of Appeals. So this makes it consistent with Article Four that was voted in by town meeting and eliminates any questions in our zoning bylaw. Well, I mean, there are plenty of questions.
But in that particular question...
Article Thirteen is even simpler. This is merely the definition of manufactured home includes a reference to section 3400 when the actual section is 4300. So if you want to be able to go to the right section, we should make that correction. Article Four, Article Four is actually related to the earth moving, so I am going to turn that one over to you because there's a little history there down that road there.
So one of the site plan regulations was that a special permit would be required for earth moving of 750 cubic yards or more. And that was actually reaffirmed at a vote after a citizen petition was not approved by voters. So everyone in town meeting was pretty clear that the 750 cubic yards was a reasonable threshold for site plan review. So one of our sections which refers not to thresholds but just to plan requirements, so when you submit a site plan to the planning board to review, the planning board likes to see grading and contours, and the section says 200, there are 2,000 cubic yards, and we're changing it to 750 cubic yards because realistically, that's what the planning board asked for. Because that's already a threshold, they like to see documentation that the grading is either below that or above that. So it's just, in some ways, it's a scripter's error too.
Right. It really is getting consistent with what's already been done. And the fifth one, Article Five, I can do this one because this one's, again, really easy. Now, the high elevation protection district regulations includes a reference to site plan review as specified in section 4160. Luckily, if you go to section 4160, you will find there is no section 4160. The section fact is 4,000. So again, it's just a scripter's error trying to make a correction so that we get the right references in our articles, and that's Article Five. Those are the consent pieces. And again, the reason they're on consent is because they should be controversial just to correct errors that have either been made in the past or need to be made based upon changes in the past.
Okay. Are there any clarifying questions? That is so great. All right.
So with your consent, we'll move on to the next one? Small victory.
Thank you.
Next one is the prior year bills. Prior year bills is a total, a total sum of $377.25 for two items, $218 to FM Generator and $158.75 to Fugate &amp; Sons. David, just a question of clarification for the folks here. Do you know what FM Generator did or what Fugate &amp; Sons does?
Well, FM Generator is our generator contract. And Fugate &amp; Sons does electrical...
Work.
Machines. They do, yeah, electric machines. So these are both invoices under the DPW department that came in after the deadline in July.
$377.25 from the 2014 annual town meeting, Article W-2.
Hey, any questions? All right.
Did you just skip seven?
She is not here.
Yeah.
Are you taking over for her, presenting?
I wouldn't say he's taking over, but would you like to...
I'll just briefly explain it, if that's all right.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Province Town has a very good network of mental health providers. So Province has a great network of substance abuse and mental health providers. The challenge is that it's bifurcated, that we have people, we have AIDS support group, Howe, Gosnell, Outer Cape, all of these things. Great example is, I need to get to the doctor in Hyannis or in Boston. There are four ways to get a free ride. Which one applies to you and which one applies to you? How do you navigate that? And how do you navigate that in diminished capacity? We need someone who is able to sort through that and to help people and advocate on behalf of people. They're not providing direct care. It's not related to actually providing substance abuse treatment or mental health treatment, but instead helping people get access to it. Something the town nurse used to do years and years ago, or at least part of what the town nurse was supposed to do. And it's something the town really needs to do because we have so many people here who have these problems and who aren't able to access care because it's just too complicated. That's why Article Seven is being presented to you in what we hope solves a problem that's a pretty desperate need in town.
Clarifying questions? And if Morgan does come, we'll get through some time as well.
I don't have a question, but I just agree that it's a safety net that's being talked about here that can be of great value to this town.
Is this someone who would be like MSW or CSW? What has any determination been made about the person who would apply for this position?
So it's either a person or it may be a collection of people, or it may be a bit of people in organizations. Because I suspect there's a group who are going to deal with specifically sort of meth addiction kind of issues, and some opiates, and some mental health. And those may be, one person can handle all of that, and maybe will, response to the RFP will be that a one person who does all of it. Or it may be a collection of nonprofits and people that get to an FTE.
Wouldn't, just to clarify, that sort of replicate the current problem of having four or five different groups having different things, you're having three or four different people doing this?
So the way, what I was envisioning was that we'd put on an RFP, they would have, here are the type of issues. What are your qualifications? It stands on the qualifications, and also looking to hire the best qualifications. And then I think it would be one or more, you could apply as a team, or you could apply as an individual. But I think that we would want to push towards team application or team approach because I think you would want, the whole purpose here is coordinating. And so you'd sort of come in that way, maybe there's a couple specialties down below, but you need that one person at the center of the web.
So, Claire?
Yeah.
Okay. My question. Is this a one-year grant, and what would happen in future years?
So this is a half-year grant, and if it passes, I suspect I'll push, put it in the operating budget for next year.
So in the operating budget for next year, it would be 100,000, because then it would be for a full year.
That's effectively an FTE, fully loaded, with both salary and benefits.
Another question.
Who would supervise this person?
We'd place it under health.
So somebody in the health department?
Yeah, right. That's why also, as was stated earlier, seeing whether Morgan was able to be here this evening. Probably under Morgan. Eventually, though, the buck stops here.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tom. Beth?
Article Eight.
Article Eight?
Article Eight is the capital improvement project, Province Town High School building, which is the building that houses Province Town schools, grades K through eight. The project is basically five parts. It is a replacement of the heating HVAC system. That system dates back to 1931. It's a steam system that has many problems in function and in, it's a very expensive system in that it uses a great deal of oil and resources and money and BTUs. And it also uses up a lot of money and time in keeping it operational. So we spend about $80,000 a year in oil and repairs for a system that does not operate in a comfortable manner. So it's a heating system that's either on or off. When it's on, it's on full force. When it's off, it's off completely. So there's no controlling the system. It's just burning fuel rapidly. So it's a replacement system with hot water for steam, which means all new pipes. Many of the pipes date back to 1931. The second part of the project is activated because the HVAC system triggers the threshold for disability access compliance. And so we have about 30 elements in the building that need to be brought into compliance. Mostly, they pertain to bathrooms, stairwells, and doors, and also to the front door, which is included in the budget to be ramped. That's something we don't intend to do, but we have to include it in order to get a variance for it. Town Hall experienced a very similar thing in the renovation of this building. The second part of the project is to replace the roofs that were put on in 1962, 1963. They are, on the 62 building, they are 30 years old at this point in time. They leak, they're failing, and it's time for their replacement. They are the remaining roofs. The 1931 building roof was replaced two years ago. The gym has eight glass block windows that are in great disrepair. They have no casings on the outside. They also need to be replaced, and that's the next big component of the project. And finally, the installation of a generator for emergency use to keep the building safe and protected. It's a very expensive project, coming in at $7.3 million, but we expect ultimately it will be less than that. $250,000 of that is just to ramp the front door, which we're not going to do. So we expect ultimately to spend around $7 million, and the state Massachusetts School Building Authority has committed 50.68% of the costs of the project. So they're committed to $3.5 million. And the town would be responsible for the rest. It equals about 13 cents per thousand dollars of your home's valuation.
Can you address what, if you have a yes vote or if you have a no vote, what would that mean?
A yes vote would be to appropriate the funds to, for Article Eight, which is $7,355,310.
And a no vote?
A no vote would be not to appropriate.
And what would happen if a no vote did not appropriate clients?
Yes, very good question. Disaster, I think, would happen because the engineers tell us that the system that exists is really way past its lifespan, and it will fail. As the BMCC had a similar system, a steam heat system, and it did fail a few years ago, and the building had to be vacated, and a new system put in. When you respond to an emergency like that, it costs you much more money, and you won't have half of it paid for by the state. Because that will go away if the town doesn't appropriate the funds. So then it becomes the forfeit of the project in an emergency situation. Because to not repair it is to lose the building. This is the largest town building at this point in time, and a very valuable town asset.
Okay. Thank you for staying within that. Another question?
I've seen the building, I've walked through it with you. I'm just asking a question that just now occurred to me, which is, are you fully utilizing that building? I mean, I didn't walk through every floor and every room.
Every room is being used, yes.
Okay. Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit more if a yes vote happens? Like what actually happened? I mean, I know it means that the money's appropriated, what are the processes? Like how long is it going to take? What would be the next step?
If the vote is yes?
Yeah, like how, you know, would it disrupt the use of the building?
No, this is a project that will happen when the building occupied. The timeframe has to be in a non-heating season. You can't replace heat when you need heat. So the timeframe is from April to October. October, just today, we turned the heat on for the first time. So it has to be operable October 2016. So we have six months in which to complete the project. It would go to bidding January, and construction would begin in April. Most of the heavy-duty work would happen in the summer when the students are not there. But a lot of the work can happen while students are there. The boiler room is accessible without coming into the school building itself. The roof is accessible. So there are pieces of it that can actually start in April, and then the massive construction would be June, as soon as school is out, July, August.
Okay. Yes.
Would you also speak to the green community status if we choose not to, if we vote no on this article?
The Province Town High School building is the largest energy consumer in town. It actually uses more energy than Town Hall, the public library, and Firehouse One combined. And that's because of the waste, not because of the size of the building. It's because the heat is either on or it's off. And in winter months, when it's off, you risk losing pipes. So Province Town is a green community. Its commitment to that requires that our energy use decreases in a specified timeframe. I'm told that we will not make that requirement the next round unless the high school building is brought under control and their consumption is significantly reduced. DPW tells me that fixing this system will save 1.2 to 1.4 billion BTUs a year, and that will allow us to keep green community status. The town has received 260 some odd thousand dollars in money as being a green community. So it's real money that we would lose if we lost that status.
Question?
I've got a whole bunch of questions, actually. Specifically, but you just started with the green community issue. Do you have a number on how much your energy savings will be should you get a yes vote? In other words, you're currently spending, you said $80,000 a year to heat the building. Do you have projected numbers of what it will cost to heat the building after the project?
Yes.
And...
So I'm told that the system is projected to be a dual-fuel burner. So we can burn either oil or propane depending on the market value reach. And I understand relatively simply switching from one to the other. So in, based on the cost of fuel, we anticipate saving between $21,000 and $41,000 a year.
Over half.
Yeah, and our, because I was spending 65 on average on fuel. The repairs should go away. This would be a warranted system, which would only require service maintenance by contract. And roofs would be warranted for 30 years.
And right now, the cost of repairs is what? That's what? 15?
The cost of repairs were averaging $30,000 a year.
Okay. Yes, we will offer that.
Over the past five...
Have you broken out the cost of the heat system versus the roof? I mean, what's, you know, what's the cost of that system out of the 7.3 million?
The heat and the ADA accessibility are put together.
Okay.
And I can't give you the exact amount off my head, but it's over 4 million of the total.
So that's about $4 million of the 7.3?
Yes.
Okay. And the roof, you're putting it at, say, $2 million or...
Oh, no, the roof is under $1 million. It's about $600,000.
Okay. I'm just curious why they didn't break out the heat as a separate line item and then, you know, why it's all lumped together and under one rather?
Well, the MSBA defines really how we do things, and the article is written the way it is, which is somewhat confusing.
Okay.
Because that's MSBA language. They supported the full project.
Okay.
And MSBA means?
The Mass School Building Authority. That's a state organization that builds and rebuilds and refurbishes the school.
Okay, we'll go with you, and then the gentleman in the back.
Could you just give us a place on their website where they could see the full budget? It's been provided in different public hearings, et cetera. It was very carefully broken down, and if you could, is it...
And you'll see it broken down at the meeting.
Right, but many people like to see this before they get to the meeting. So is there a place where they could gain access to it before?
Or we can make that happen.
Yes. That would be, I think, helpful because it's a big number and obviously...
How long would that take to make that happen?
I think we could probably do that tomorrow.
11 seconds.
So like...
On a town website?
On the town website, yes.
Put on a town, it's a pretty helpful place.
There's a little something there.
Well, that's, so that's what we expect in maintenance. David has our slideshow that we're going to do at town meeting. It's towards the end.
You had mentioned about not doing the ramp in front of the building. I just wanted to clarify, are you bringing the rest of the building up to ADA except for the ramp?
Absolutely.
So everything else is part of the budget?
Yes. We have an accessible door in the front of the building?
I'm sorry, yes. And I assume that that was, it was that starred building issue and you were...
Exactly.
Okay. I didn't want to, I didn't know whether or not the rest of the building is going to be.
All the other, inside and outside, the ADA compliance also includes the sidewalks around the building. All of that will be included.
One last question?
One last question.
Clarifying. This is a really old building. I'm assuming that someone has checked for asbestos, and if so, it's already part of the budget?
There are contingencies for asbestos. There was no asbestos in the 1931 roofing project. There was asbestos in the casings around the gym windows, that's why they've been removed. So there is contingency money in case we find things, but the roofs have been cut. They've done all the testing to this point to give us the impression that that won't be an issue.
But it's in the budget, just in case.
But it is in the budget, correct?
Yes.
You said this is one of the most valuable assets that the town has. So what does the 7.3 represent as a percentage of the total value of the building, if we have any sense of that?
The building is valued at 11 something million.
So this is...
In current state?
In its current state, yes.
This is 70% of the value of the building?
But the town's only paying half of that.
Yeah.
Any other clarified questions to move on? If not, yes.
I just wanted to ask the support committee to mention that there are really two votes, one at town meeting and one at the election the next day.
At town meeting, we need a two-thirds majority vote, and then the very next day there's an election, and this is the only thing on the ballot. And that requires a majority of one.
And this is an important one, so, you know, your support would deeply be appreciated. So if there are any other clarifying questions?
Just procedural, why, I'm new to the process, I don't understand why do we have to vote on it twice? And why does it need two-thirds first and then a majority? Is it just because it's such a big amount of money?
Up two and a half.
It's a two and a half vote.
And I'm sorry, I have no idea what that means.
I can clarify. So it's a proposition to enact debt exclusion. The overall word is misleading. It authorizes the town to borrow the loan that's needed for the project.
That's not considered part of the town standard debt fund?
It's not on the operating funds of the town.
This is more of a suggestion than a question. I think if we could get a value of the building after these improvements, because this is really a preservation thing. So if you're, when you're due your presentation and you see the full one, if you could say the 7.3 hedges our bets as a community so that the asset is worth X afterwards, I think that would make it more profitable to people.
And is this to do that?
Well, we need to look at, well, the thing is, right, it's a single-purpose building, right? And so a single-purpose building, among the methods of assessing as a single-purpose building, the most common is the cost to reconstruct rather than the value as is. So we'd actually get a, we might need a construction cost to, because what you're really getting is you're essentially getting, right, not a new building, but your replacement cost is really going to be the value of the building. So we could run that, but your average appraisal, like the land of the building, is really not an accurate reflection of its value. So we could get it, but it's really the cost to construct that's going to be the value I'd look at.
And could you get it by next week?
No. No, so let me just say this about that. No, so let me just say this about that. The town is required to educate each building. It needs a school building in order to do that. This particular school building to replace currently, the MSBA, and this is an interesting point because they came to look at it worried about their investment in a 1931 building. And so they really scrutinized the building. And they left totally convinced that it was worth their investment because the building otherwise is in such good condition. So they feel that its value and its lifespan will continue for many, many years. They generally don't fund something that they feel won't survive less than 50 years. So, and I've been to several MSBA meetings in this process because this process has been going on for two and a half years. New buildings are running minimally $70 million and up.
Is that in presentation? That's information.
No, because it's not something we're even considering.
Well, people might be lying.
That might be emotionally, yeah.
The easiest way to do it, and usually it's sort of a thumbnail, you know, dollars per square foot construction. We've seen, you know, $200 million high school built in Newton. I think there must be some generally accepted kind of thumbnail sketch of how many dollars per square foot. And you could use that instead of saying, you know, they generally, it's just a different way of looking at it. Say how many square feet you've gotten, what the average cost of a new elementary school building, what the facilities you have.
We can look at that, but I think no one's gonna go wrong by saying, you know, even being conservative, 60 million?
Yeah.
80 million?
Right.
I mean, this is what it's, this is what it costs. And Newton was a very different circumstance.
No, no, no. If you ask that question.
You can't buy it for less.
If you ask that question at town meeting, our team will be there, the architect and project manager, and they can certainly answer that question.
Okay, it exceeds my expertise.
Just one more?
Okay.
There's a minimum quorum for town meeting. Is there a minimum number of writers that need to vote the next day?
No, I'm told no.
So Beth, thank you. Thank you very much. Reality check, we have one hour and 15 minutes for 11 more. So, number nine is Richard.
No, I'm probably gonna be doing that.
You're gonna be doing that?
So, number nine, is the kind of in-house, some of our operations, this is for a, we, do you have the picture? No, favor? Do you have the picture there? Triggers of a track from basically of a sidewalk snowplow. It's a small tractor that can be used in all seasons by the DPW. It's better designed than the currently contracted services that we're using. And the contracted services that we're using are both expensive, and we only have it for the contracted moments. Whereas this, we would have permanently, as you can see by the, with the attached blower, you can actually blow it right into a truck that's going alongside, and it can be used in all seasons. And as Richard said, it's actually much better for our smaller spaces and sidewalks than our current, the one that we're currently leasing renting in the winter. So it's a simple one, bring it in-house, add capacity, full utilization, have it 24/7.
If this triggers any really hard feelings from last year, we will have a support. Are there any questions? Great, thank you. Okay, number 10. Same.
As well. This is a request by myself as town manager after having sat with both the building committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the finance committee. And as has been said by the chair of the Board of Selectmen, I think, very well. This request for $39,000 is to try and help break what appears to be a multi-year logjam on an issue. It may be, in its simplest terms, a fresh set of eyes. But the three questions are, so, one, let's get down to what are the actual requirements for the Province Town Police Station for new station? Specifically, what is the smallest economical option available? There's been some discussion, Paul Kelly's done a rehash and a recut at it, is the original architects look at it. Second question is, is the VFW site still appropriate for new police stations accommodated? And then third, if not there, looking at the other sites or any other site, what could? We also, of course, have gotten information in, and we're still working it over, on what is the current condition, what is the condition of the current police station? And so that really should be mixed in here as well under a, if we don't build it anywhere else, could you repair it on-site? And if you did, what would you get? And what would you get at what price? And so comparing all those to be able to come back for Springtown meeting to be able to have the skinniest possible building with the review of the locations, the review of the VFW site, and the comparison with rebuilding it on location. It's really my conclusion after having, you know, I hit this one like a brick wall in my first two weeks of being here. And my sense is the town has a lot of things on its agenda to be get done. I can't guarantee an outcome to anybody. But what I do hope is that through effective use of this, we can at least get to the place where we can have a final discussion on a go and no-go basis. But right now, we have a lot of, it appears to me, a lot of circling the drain. It's not really going anywhere. But we're just continuing to go around in circles on this incredibly important issue. And I'd like to help the town to be able to get to an answer, go, no-go, where, where or not. And if a fresh set of eyes can do that, but then I'm all for it. And to be able to pull that off, I've requested $39,000 to work with the architecture firm to get that.
Good shot.
Stop clock is right twice a day.
All right, and you're up again.
This one's, wait, this one's beyond me. Terms are complicated. This is Article 11. This is the condo conversion bylaw. This is a part of the Board of Selectmen's goals for the year to bring this forward. So Massachusetts in 1983 enacted what's called the condo conversion law. And it's an act, Chapter 527, that really regulates tenant rights as condo conversions happen. But it also affords municipalities the right to create further regulation. At the time this was enacted, a variety of communities went ahead and enacted bylaws. One of them, one of the towns that did so was Amherst. And Amherst did so on the basis of a comparison with the current vacancy in the rental market. What is the vacancy rate for units? And made it that if it was below 5%, you couldn't do any conversions unless it was a severe hardship. I can get to that in a second. And if it was above 5%, you could do it, and it would be discretionary, but on a basis of a whole series of criteria. What this bylaw does adopts the Amherst approach. It also, in addition, though, given the fact that this is a very complicated activity that you want to get right, and what state law provides is, when you have an immediate issue, a problem so severe that you need to act immediately, and you don't have every single answer, you need some time to figure it out. But the time you take to figure it out, you know, the operation was a success, the patient did die. So what you need to be able to do is you need to have some time to figure it out. So the law allows you to do a moratorium. And so this bylaw in Article 11, which does not require the state attorney generals, it does not require the legislature's approval, but does require the attorney general to take a look at it, provides a two-year moratorium while the town looks at both implementing this bylaw and as well making whatever other steps we can make to alleviate, and I don't think that in two years by any token, the housing crisis here will be alleviated, right? 30 years to get into a problem is not two years to get out. But whatever steps could be taken to further the action plan. So this would affect, one of the other unique aspects of the 1983 Act was it affected all units built before 1983. That was the deal they struck. All units after 1983 were not covered by that law. And so Article 11 only applies to the pre-1983 units, which is David, about 300, 400?
No, four and more.
Yeah, four, yes, that's right, I forgot the four.
But applies to 300 and 34 units, certainly.
Right, and four units and above, you're right, I forgot that point. Just as a side point, Article 12, we'd have to go to the state legislature, would bring it up to date to cover all of those four or more units above built up to today. So that's the difference between the two. Article 12 expands the coverage. Article 11 applies to pre-1983. That's essentially what this does. This also provides, after the two-year moratorium, this provides a review, we can call it a hardship, but you need to look at Article, Section 5 under the regulations. And you need to look at Section B, which says, in part, it's the third line under B. When the vacancy rate is equal to or lower than 5%, a building owner may not apply unless the financial or other circumstances for the owner are such that a prohibition of a conversion would constitute an unconstitutional confiscation of the owner's property. So if it's an unconstitutional taking because of financial circumstances or otherwise, then you'd be able to proceed. So there's essentially a hardship exemption. But that hardship exemption, as this is currently drafted, would come in after the two-year moratorium.
So which board would be making that?
The Board of Selectmen.
Questions? Let's start with someone who.
If you take one step back, pretend I'm a fifth grader. I still don't quite understand, like, what, all the words you said, I understood. I don't understand exactly what happens if this passes or not, like.
If this passes, then all the units for or more built before 1983, about 300 and?
30.
Forty units. I just want to keep getting in my head. Those units would, first, for two years, it'd be a moratorium on converting them to condos. Then after that period, whenever the vacancy rate is above 5%, they'd be able to convert. When it's below 5%, they'd only be able to convert on a hardship based upon financial other consideration. And if Article 12 passed, that same circumstance would now apply to all units built up till today.
Yes.
Two questions. One, this is only applies to currently, well, Article 11 applies to buildings prior to 1983. And Article 12 applies buildings up to now. So none of this applies to empty lots, for instance?
No.
Well, no, but you can, if you're putting a moratorium on new condos, then you could, in theory, say.
No, it's on the conversion, not on new condos. It's on the conversion.
Okay. All right, another question I forgot about for a while.
We'll come back to you.
So I have two questions. Units that are less than four are not affected by either of these?
Are not affected by either.
Second question is, how is the vacancy rate calculated?
That's part of the discussion and part of the two-year period. We should be getting to a validated approach. I think that, at least to the discussions that I've heard, that it really should be, the definition of vacant appears to be vacant and available for rent as opposed to vacant because vacant would include objects that aren't even on the market, and that would render the whole definition pointless.
Which also shouldn't be.
Which also shouldn't be, right. And then, but I think there needs to be further discussion about that.
What constitutes four units? Is it four units in the same building? Could it be two buildings with two units in each? I mean, what constitutes four units?
It could be on the same lot.
It'd have to be on the same lot, yeah. I agree, Gloria, it'd have to be on the same lot.
Okay.
Do you remember?
Yes. And again, this is something that's new. Is there any appeal after the Board of Selectmen rules on, let's say you're trying to get, you know, you're claiming an unconstitutional breach, and the Board of Selectmen rules against it, can you appeal that?
Yes. I mean, and if it's on, if you have a constitutional claim, you can go all the way up to, you know, our nine justices John in DC.
What are some of the other communities in Massachusetts that have adopted this other than Amherst and are incomparable to Province Town? Or maybe the far west of Massachusetts?
If you have one in mind.
No, I'm just saying, like, something like Stockbridge where they have a lot of second homeowners.
David?
So I don't know if I can recite the list. I don't, I think most of them are going, well, nothing's comparable, we already know that. So I think mostly all and around the Boston metro region. So Cambridge and Somerville and Brookline and Abington and, so Bedford, Acton, 15, I think it's between 12 and 15. I don't recall the other communities. So I don't know that, again, any of them are necessarily, so Amherst, I think, is the opposite of us, so they're similar in the sense that it's a seasonal issue. Maybe Boston is too because of all the universities, but obviously Boston is large enough that it can absorb that issue. So I think the reason why we looked at the Amherst model compared to the other 15 that we did look at was because most of them only address the tenancy rights issue. This address the inventory issue, and that's our concern. It's the evictions and the inability for evictions to find an alternative.
Tom?
So don't, David, just to follow up on that, don't most of the other towns that are more like Cottage Town in fact, Turo, as an example, have a prohibition on year-round condominiums rather than having this permitting process? So rather than, this is a middle ground, most towns like Investor Mass do a prohibition, they just don't have condos. Turo's taken that path, as an example.
Well, Turo has condos. Their community by law.
They only preseason.
Right, it had to do with the cottage colonies converting, but you can sell condos in Turo that are year-round.
I won't.
Well, you have.
Let's keep going.
You done, Tom? You done?
Yeah.
So if this article passes and there's a two-year moratorium, what would we like to see accomplished in that two years?
From my point of view, and I can just speak administratively, what I'd like to see is a couple things. I'd like to see clarity and community agreement on vacancy rate and how that's calculated and agreed, what's in the pool and what's not. Second, I'd like to see us move from what I believe to be, we have a housing action plan, but if I was to really retitle that, I think it's a housing opportunity plan. And I'd like to see that converted into far more detail with a lot more understanding for the town related to the economics and the numbers, exact gap numbers. I'd like to see the special acts up in front of the legislature enacted, both the room tax applicability to many of these condominiums as well as to the trust fund. And I'd like to see the town being able to be in a better position to be able to execute on real estate acquisition and deal-making, to be able to put housing in place. And movement on particular numbers for housing develops on inclusionary zoning bylaw. All these things together and probably four more that I can't even think of. Because this is not gonna be, it's not gonna be a one silver bullet, nor is it gonna be able to be solved in that period. But if we can get underway on a variety of fronts and start changing both the economics, the underlying economics, and also the tripwires, because this is a tripwire approach, which is useful. But at the same time, it's really a part of a puzzle. And the other part of the puzzle is really working on those underlying economics. So, and again, that goes back to the special acts and the ability to execute. So what you can say is, the simplest thing is, it's about getting the vacancy rate calculated. But at the same time, if all these were put in place, where you really want to be at, both articles, if both of them put in place, is you want to be in a position that you're, this succeeds if you can do a whole bunch of things that gets that vacancy rate above 5%. I mean, that's where we want to be, right? We want to be able to be in a place where the vacancy rate is above 5. And to get there, we need to be doing this and so much more. So this is a beginning, but in no sense is it the whole pie. That would be, if I was to ask, what am I looking, someone said to me, what are you going to do about this as the town manager after October 26th? That's what I'd like to do over the next two months after that, is put together with everybody, that sort of an action plan.
Other questions?
Yes.
A two-part question, relates to 5B. What methodology would the Board of Selectmen use to make their judgment? Whether it was an unconstitutional confiscation? And the B part, maybe Amherst has already answered this, is, have there been any examples in Amherst litigation around this?
There have been, and I, I did talk to Bob Ritchie, the general counsel from Amherst at the time this was done. And Bob also became the state assistant attorney general in charge of review of municipal bylaws. So he's kind of, we've got to ask. Bob basically said they were always able to work it out. There's been some pieces, but he really said that this is one that they've been, over the course of time, really been able to work with each of the developers. They haven't actually had, as far as he said to me, he did not recall that they'd have a constitutional crisis case that went up. I think you would look at, you would look at C, but at the end of the day, what I would, what I would suggest, and I am not counsel for the, for the town of Province Town by any token, but I've done probably over two hundred eminent domain takings in my time. And there are clear legal standards for what is an unconstitutional taking, and what is a, what is a sufficient, a material diminution?
Diminution.
Diminution of value, and, and how that operates. But essentially, it's robbing the owner from any of their economic value or their place space, the direction they can go. So that would be what I, what you'd wind up relying on, lawyers.
Clear? Any other questions? All right. You need to, anything else about 12?
12 would just, as again I said, would be, would be, go to the, would have to go to the legislature for approval. And if it did, then it would extend the, the application to all units up until today.
And there are, there are models 12 at what Amherst, just like your model 12?
Uh, no one has, no, no one has updated, as far as I know, I haven't checked. David, did you see now? Sure. Which is really a flaw for many of those communities.
Sure.
Only one question. How many units are included in that question? You went all the way to current?
Over fourteen, no.
And that's only four or two more, or just?
Two or more.
Oh, two or more. Anything else?
So it's not just, so it's not just the timing of when it was built. It also increases and decreases the number of units that it relates to.
I guess that was the original draft, is that what ended up in the final?
I, I...
So on 12...
Did we change it from four to two?
I don't, honestly, I don't...
No, I think maybe...
I don't see that, David.
Yes, and that didn't make the rewrite, then, so it is still going to be four more.
Yeah. Four more.
Okay, great. So would that be fourteen hundred?
No, it would be less, but we do have that number.
Yeah, I thought that number was...
Originally, when we originally drafted this, did that analysis, it was two or more up to 2016. And so we, now that I am realizing that it didn't get included in the...
I don't know that it didn't, I, I think that we had discussions, David, and it was decided not to include it, but, oh. Yeah. I think it was, I think it was a simple extension.
Yeah, we tried to simplify it, much as possible, so, but it, but we do have that number.
Because I, yeah, I thought that number was more like a thousand, but we'll, we'll have that.
Makes sense. All right. That's it. Okay, moving on to parking equipment.
This is a final payment of thirty-two thousand, four hundred, eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. This is related to the improvements that were done in the park lots that began in 2013. This really is the additional unexpected cost related to the equipment, the electrical work, and the software on the system, and the underground wiring. So essentially, this completes the, and represents the last and final payment to the vendor for the work that we've done to upgrade our parking system.
Questions? Clear. All right. Number fourteen. Sold personal property exception?
Where's the picture, Andrea, the picture's on there, David?
Sure.
Yeah, where's the next one? Right there, there you go.
Did I miss it?
No, that's it, and there's another one after that, but if you like pie charts, it's a pie chart. If you want a, if you want a spreadsheet, the next one's a spreadsheet. But essentially, they all say the same thing. In fact, though, if you can go to the other one for a second, but one more slide down. Okay. So basically what this does, it exempts, and from personal property, sending out any mailing for anything less than two thousand, right, two thousand five hundred dollars. Overall, this represents, reduces our revenue by only one twentieth of 1%, or eight thousand dollars, out of a total value collected of eighteen million. And this is twenty-two percent of the accounts. So in terms of, and, and, right, and some of these are as low as forty-four cents, right? So it's less than the stamp, and then you've got to record it, and then if they don't pay it, there's a lien for forty-five cents that, you know, is on there for twenty years, and no one, including the Department of Revenue, can get that taken away. So what this really does is, it gets rid of that category, reducing the bureaucratic burden and reducing the burden on the taxpayers as well, while not really materially changing our revenue stream or anything like that. So again, this is a, this is, from a cost-benefit analysis, it costs more to collect this than it does to, well, it costs more to collect it than it's worth.
Question? Okay. David, you're going to get a little break here.
Good.
Okay.
I'm going to go to the audience and ask some really tough questions.
I'm the vice chair of the Board of Health, and the Board of Health has had hearings recently about smoking, and we've looked at a number of different approaches. It's within the purview of the Board of Health to regulate smoking, including on town beaches. But it was, and we've had, actually had people come in and request that we bar people from smoking on the benches in front of Town Hall and around Town Hall. And some of the complaints have been about the trash and cigarette butts and side stream smoke that people get, and people have come in and complained about children and dogs eating butts. And butts apparently on the beach do not disintegrate very rapidly, and they remain for a long period of time, and they are toxic to animals and probably not good for children. So in our discussion about how to proceed, it was our feeling that philosophically the town should control the town's property, not the Board of Health, even though we have the authority to do it. So even though we are unanimous in our support of this resolution, our recommendation was to bring it to town meeting and to seek town meeting support for this. Another aspect of it that will come up, I'm sure, has to do with enforcement. And if it were a Board of Health regulation, it would be the Board of Health staff that would be tasked with enforcing that. If it's a town regulation, then it is potentially the police who could enforce this. But I'd like to address that point by just saying, in public health theory generally, prevention theory generally, the idea is that when community makes a decision about what it wants to see in the community, it's the effect of your neighbors and your friends who show you that you're not allowed to do that. People don't smoke in bars today, not because there's a law and the police are going to come arrest you. It's because if you lit up a cigarette in the bar, everybody in the bar would say, what are you doing? You're not allowed to smoke in here. So the idea here, from the Board of Health's perspective, is that if smoking were banned on town beaches, eventually, smoking would stop on town beaches, and it wouldn't require massive enforcement or even education programs, it would just happen automatically. That's our approach. So what's proposed is to make Province Town the ninth town on Cape Cod that would ban smoking on town beaches. Currently, it is banned on all of the national seashore beaches, so we're just talking about the harbor side beaches. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just for my interest, with those other nine towns, have you gotten any feedback as to how it's working? Because I know at the national seashore, because I helped do it at one point, there was a lot of butts picked up this year in the cleanup town. That's all I know is down here.
Yeah, I mean, the towns that I've seen, I've mostly seen reports in newspapers like the Boston Globe, and they typically go up and talk to somebody who, you know, is upset that they can't smoke on the beach, and they express their frustration with not being able to live in free society and smoke wherever they want. And then the rest of the story is about how the town doesn't have to pay a lot of money to clean up the butts. The butts are not just, you know, sitting there on the beach for years and years and years. Pets aren't eating them, humans aren't eating them. I mean, generally, it seems to be pretty positive. And, and again, what is reported is that once it becomes illegal, it just eventually stops. And it's not that you flip a switch and, no, you know, if we pass this, next summer, there'll still be people smoking on the beach. But by 2020, there probably will not be people who will sit out and smoke on the beach in front of everybody.
Yes.
Is there any budget for signage?
The Board of Health would ask for budget, if this passes, to put a sign, because we agree that, you know, just like the dog leash signs, it has an impact. So even, again, you know, with the dog leashes, what you see is people who take their dogs off-leash when they're not supposed to, and as soon as somebody gives them the side eye, they put their dog on a leash. It'll probably be the same thing, people will be out for smoking, and then when someone looks at them funny, they'll take their butt out, hopefully not throw it on the beach.
Anyone else? Are you going to present this?
I will be presenting it at a town meeting next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom? You're down here for town meeting election speaking minutes?
Yeah.
Last town meeting, we, we have a meeting, the week before town meeting, the moderator, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, chairman of the Finance Committee, town clerk, town manager, hope, sort of cast of characters, gets together and discusses and does the game plan for the town meeting. Last spring, for annual and special town meeting, we changed the speaking limit. During the middle of the town meeting, we recognized that we in fact had broken a bylaw, and that is this bylaw. No one noticed, and no one seemed to notice that we had shrunk the speaking time from ten to five minutes. Five minutes continues to be a long time, if I spoke for five minutes now, you would all become restless, and maybe are now. So this is, I think, a non-starter. I mean, it's, five minutes is plenty of time, public statements at the Board of Selectmen are three minutes, I don't know what the school committee does, but this, I think, people can make their time in five minutes, and it makes the town meeting, I think, more efficient and effective, I believe.
Questions?
Why five minutes and not three?
Because we want to actually replicate what we did by, sort of, at this meeting, we did it, it worked. Why fix it again? Like, it, it really did, I think, change the sort of tenor of, of the discussion, and five minutes is plenty of time. So that, it lets people make a complicated argument, but, you know, most people speak for less than five minutes, even when the allowed time is ten.
Somebody could amend that on the floor, I suppose, to three minutes if they wanted to.
I don't know, is that more restrictive?
Really?
Well, it's not, I don't think the law's as simple as that. So you have, it's a matter of whether or not town meeting body is on proper notice that the time, the duration of speech will be amended. So it is a, it's generally moderated, it's all as to whether or not it's within the scope of the original warrant.
I have another question, so at this town meeting, oh, the duration should be at the start.
By 2016.
The other thing we introduced last time was a clock that, so people see how many minutes they're talking, which actually also helps limit, because you don't realize how long you're talking sometimes, or you say it over and over and over and over again. So the moderator did not say today, do you remember, David or David Bush, Mary Jo said she was going to do?
I think her intention is for five minutes, unless you challenge her.
Maybe by the time it gets to that, people will be ready for the...
Well, I have another question then. If a bylaw amendment, if it's voted at town meeting, is it effective immediately? Or is it effective for the next town meeting?
That's a great question.
Does anybody have the answer?
It's effective when the attorney general approves.
Yeah, it will be effective at the first time.
Later.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But there's no reason that the town board couldn't decide, act like it wasn't a fact.
Practice. All right, seventeen and eighteen, are you going to do that with Gloria?
I'm going to start with eighteen, because I think this is going to be something that everyone's going to be pleased with. So the planning board decided to withdraw that amendment because there was a typographical error on the warrant. So when we put it all together, we have, I'm jumping ahead to eighteen, just because it's a quicker one. When we put it all together, it was basically taking the review of two single-family dwellings on a lot in Res 2, which is currently reviewed by the Board of Appeals, and giving it to the planning board. Unfortunately, something happened in the translation, on the printed warrant in the newspaper, it actually says that that's currently not allowed, so...
This is actually the correct, the correct version, and then the warrant came out.
And then the warrant came out with, instead of BA crossed out, it just says no. So I thought that was too much of a substantive change. It looked like we were taking something that was not allowed and giving it to the planning board, when really what we were doing was taking something that was allowed by the zoning board and giving it to the planning board. So the planning board voted unanimously to withdraw that. You'll see it again, correctly typeset with the banner in the spring. So that's off the warrant. All right, Article seventeen. This is a zoning bylaw amendment on accessory dwellings in the residential two zoning district. I think you guys might remember that at the last town meeting, we had an article that we put forward to allow a single accessory dwelling unit in the Res 1 zoning district. So Res 1, where one dwelling unit's allowed, if you make a year-round rental that's limited in size, you're allowed to have a second dwelling unit. We're doing the same thing in the Res 2 zoning district, so now you're allowed to have two dwelling units, but if you choose to make a year-round rental, you can have a third. So it's basically taking the same thing we did and applying it to another zoning district. And just to give you some background, so since that article passed about the accessory dwelling unit in Res 1, we've had five inquiries, two are moving forward currently for accessory dwellings, and I think one is very likely to, to move forward.
Okay. Are there any questions about that?
I think it was a unanimous vote at town meeting the last time, to get these in the Res 1 zoning district.
Thank you, Gloria. And last, we had citizen petition. John?
John or Jen?
Or Jen?
Or Jen?
David, you want to close this out?
I signed the petition.
I didn't even see the petition, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I signed the petition. So there has been much discussion outside of town meeting about the fact that certain members of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee speak on their personal, not, not presenting their respective board's position, but their personal position on an item, and they stand at the front microphone to do that. And so this, if this passes, this would require that, other than when presenting their official board positions, that they would go to and stand in line in one of the microphones in the hall. So...
Like all other places?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question, it says should.
Yeah.
So is that, I mean, that seems really wishy-washy, won't that just mean it's at the moderator's discretion? Or whose discretion will that be?
Well, I think it would indicate that, if it passes, it would indicate that the town body expects that that's what would happen. It doesn't mean that if they spoke from the front microphone, that it would somehow be in violation of the bylaw, but it would certainly be in derogation of what the body has asked and expects of them.
I guess I, I don't know how you would determine whether someone was voicing their opinion as a minority or majority supporter of a, of a vote that came before one of these committees, or if they were speaking as individuals, they're still, still speaking to the context of that issue. And so, and to what extent are they speaking as private citizens, and to what extent are they speaking as Board of Selectmen or, or if I... they speaking as board of selectmen or, or finance committee members? I don't know how you'd make that distinction, really.
Well, so there's two things going on, and it's kind of interesting. At the beginning, when a, when a warrant is, is presented, the sponsor is able to present, and then after that, the board of selectmen are asked if they have a position, and they are able to present an official majority and minority position. And then the finance committee is offered the opportunity to give an official majority minority opinion. After that, when they're, so no one's supposed to be called on twice to speak on the same item. But in the past, what's happened is that members from the front, and primarily from the finance committee, have spoken repeatedly, and even though they may still be reiterating the points that they made in their official report, the idea, I think, and why I supported this and signed it, was that they would then go and stand in line with everyone else at the microphone and speak, and not do it from their official, you know, as if they're getting multiple rejoinders to present their official report.
Is there a process that's already set up for that? Do people know that there's really, you know, two official reports, there's a majority and a minority, or?
Announce them now.
I, I mean, I think that's the way it's been done.
Tom?
So do you know, did the proponent speak to the town moderator, to the chairman of the board of selectmen, any selectmen or any member of the finance committee before they decided the bylaw?
I don't believe that they did. Although I do know that they were expressing rather openly their frustration with the last two town meetings and the process that was used. But I don't know that they ever met with that specifically.
So my, my question then is, is how do you define private citizen? Like, when, and when I go to the grocery store, when am I a private citizen and when am I a selectman?
Sure. And I would just say, you know, out of respect to you and the selectmen, it really isn't directed at the selectmen specifically, because I think the perception is that you all typically make your report, and then you sit down and don't continue to get up and up and up. And it's really the finance committee, I think, that you see members standing repeatedly to address the same issue. But I, I understand the question. I think it's that after the official, the first formal report is made, if you then want to join the discussion again, the idea is you would go to the microphone and stand with everyone else and speak, because you're no longer making the official report of your committee.
So I think that the challenge for the board of selectmen, less so for the finance committee, is that we are often proponent of most of the warrant. So we're actually answering questions for which we're not actually giving an opinion or advice at town meeting, we're actually the proponent.
Right.
The people proposing it. So it's not just our advice at town meeting, but it's actually our, our, some for example, something the board of selectmen proposes at town meeting. So that sort of count, point, counterpoint is, I think what you're trying to get to is not, I suspect, is so that we don't enter debate, but there is a lot of sort of more information that comes, and this makes that, to me, hard to distinguish what is my opinion versus what is the proponent's intention, right? And it requires the moderator to anticipate which of those I'm about to do.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's not easy. I mean, I, you know, I suspect that this may not pass, but I suspect that people's behavior may change as a result of it.
So what I hope is that in the future, when there's a contention about how town meeting is run, that the people who have a contention will actually poach the people they have a contention with. And I think that's the way town has to openly operate. If you have a problem with me, come talk to me.
Right. I don't think that's really what the issue is. You know, we spend hours and hours in meetings discussing these things and getting information from town staff, et cetera, and a lot of times, in a minority or majority report, we don't have an opportunity to provide all of the information that might be a backdrop to it. So are we in fact, when we provide additional information, are we just private citizens, or are we in fact presenting information we think is pertinent to the issue? I think it's, it's.
We have hands up, so let's go around this way. Yes.
I, I think what's really, I want to say a couple of things. One is, is that this issue has been talked about for at least five or six years, and nothing has changed. In fact, I would say, the finance committee gets up more than it did five years ago. The second thing is, is that the reports in the beginning need to be as comprehensive as possible. There shouldn't be the need for somebody from the finance committee to get up five, six, seven times in a discussion of the warrant to add more information. The, the presentation, you've got the floor, nobody else can interrupt you, should be as comprehensive as possible.
Okay. Yes.
And then to Tom's point is, if there's a direct question, I'm not clear on this, you're responding to a question, you're not grandstanding, and I think that's the issue that people, and that's why this came up.
Okay.
I think it would be very helpful to have that, because I, I have felt as a person sitting in queues, so to speak, that we're kind of being preached at sometimes on some of the, the issues, and it, it gets a little like someone just pounding at you.
Well, my friend John Golden said that he was able to get the signatures for this warrant in less than one hour. So there definitely is something here, and whether people should have talked to each other to resolve it or not, I, you know, I take your point. I think that's fair. Yeah, but I think there's something here beneath this that is not gonna immediately go away.
And this is a great, great segue into having no opinions. I get it wrong. Here we go, right? But, you know, 365 coming up with the concept of having space to get clear clarity for a town meeting, we would like to hear some opinions on how does that work for you, and should this continue? And what this question is, is definitely going to have to be revisited with some process. And this is an attempt to create a new process here in PTW. Has it been?
It's been great.
Yeah. I'm sorry that more people couldn't come.
How did it, how did the word get spread that this was happening? Because I was, we were kind of hoping for more people, so how did that outreach happen?
The banner. It was on the progress town community space on Facebook.
I got a Facebook invitation.
So.
A lot of Facebook.
Times.
May I give a bit of advice on timing? Is that from my perspective, having been on the finance committee for six years, selectmen and finance committee, is people start paying attention when the banner comes out that there is a before-town meeting. That's when the questions, that's when the what does this mean, that's where the banner does, it's for comprehensive view of the warrant, and that's where you get more interest. So if you were to do this again, I would recommend it be on that Thursday or later, before-town meeting.
I'm just kind of wondering, I missed, I guess, I knew, is there someone for the banner here tonight? Who?
Peter. Peter, come on. Brian.
Just wondering if somebody for the banner was here.
Jay was asking to see if someone for the banner.
Yeah, there's somebody here, but there was also somebody who, because Brian was so diligent, came to my office, gave it to me early. You know, it was on my desk, and it was buried, 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 buried down deeper. You know, I should have had a reminder, a tickler, you know, to drop it into the paper. Instead, I use Facebook. You know, I kept pushing my Facebook message up to the top of the banner Facebook page. Yeah, I dropped the ball this time, I do take, you know.
Okay, Peter, we'll find you.
I'll, I'll remember that.
I, I think that we could also use social media a little bit better. I think we could have put it on the main Problem Town Facebook pages. Not to forget, we could have done that on, over the weekend, we could have done it this morning, so we can just advertise it, I think, a little bit better also in the social media.
And, and parking it up old-school, get five frames, bring five frames.
I know town has a sandwich board, is it possible to put that in front like we do for town meetings?
It's a, it's a.
Great idea. Yeah. They do it for performances. Yeah.
Suggestions?
Well, you know, it's not an outreach, I don't think you change the topic, but I don't know if it'd be, if it's possible to, I don't know if it's possible, it might be hard to present a little more clearly what pros and cons of an issue are. So like, for example, I don't know, like, on the tenant one, the con of the version one, I know some people are absolutely freaking out about it, looking out about it. I don't think they're here, and I know it's not, they're not necessarily here to, not to have a debate, but at least they should present in an objective way, the two sides.
Some more specifics you're asking for.
And if I be, the only thing I didn't want to have is I didn't want to have town staff on any of these issues become the lightning rod, and the town staff, and that's also why I did present most of these myself, because not knowing how it would go, I wanted to make sure that I, that I didn't put town staff in the line of any fire.
Maybe, and maybe it's impossible, maybe it's a.
But no, no, voters, residents, members of town meeting want to take the proponent, opponent on the poll site.
I mean, the original concept for tonight was what a pro and no vote would mean. So to kind of keep everyone neutral and just to inform everyone, and this is our first, and there is a learning curve to this, and hopefully by spring, we have.
We had a hand up here and over here, and then we're gonna wrap it up.
Oh, I was, I had a hand up regarding the citizen petition, just to comment that this didn't come out of the blue. If I recall correctly, there was a letter read on the floor from Jennifer Cabral that clearly stated what her perception of a serious problem was with the town meeting, and this is a result of nothing happening after that. So this is a, a process.
Yes. No, the only other thing I had is if you could post, if this has been videotaped, if you could make sure that it's posted on the town news. Are there any other places, you know, the library, website, wherever we can, to say you can have access to it through all of these, these means, because I think that at least this will be another mechanism for giving people information, and that was the goal.
And so in the future, any ideas can go to 365. I want to say to you all, look, we're early. That's amazing that you've done. And, you know, staying on track, it's great that you all have done that, especially the verbally dominant ones. Thank you very much.